Good morning. I'm here to give you a brief introduction to the organization of the Crow Tribe. It's good morning. Happy New Year, everyone. I'm John Gammey. I'm here to introduce the members of the Crow Tribe. The first one is Mr. Canute Old Crow. The second one is Mr. Bryce Hokes. I'm here to introduce the members of the Crow Tribe. The first one is Mr. Canute Old Crow. The second one is Mr. Bryce Hokes. The third one is Mr. Bryce Hokes. I'm here to introduce the members of the Crow Tribe. The fourth one is Mr. Bryce Hokes. I'm here to introduce the members of the Crow Tribe. The fifth one is Mr. Bryce Hokes. The sixth one is Mr. Bryce Hokes. The seventh one is Mr. Bryce Hokes. The eighth one is Mr. Bryce Hokes. I'm here to introduce the members of the Crow Tribe. The ninth one is Mr. Bryce Hokes. The tenth one is Mr. Bryce Hokes. The eleventh one is Mr. Bryce Hokes. Okay, we'll start with the roll call vote for the quorum. We'll start with Black Lodge, Senator Three Arms. Just say, uh, Three Arms, Black Lodge, here.
Two arms, Black Lodge, here.
Rogers, Black Lodge, here.
Stewart, Black Lodge.
Heel, Reno.
Harold Burden Brown, Reno, here.
Okay, uh, we'll go with, uh, Licorn, Licorn, I nominate Black Lodge. Prior and Wyallah. Oh, Black Lodge, huh?
Tyson Grove on Black Lodge, here.
Licorn.
Alden, Big One, here.
Spider Norris, Big One, here.
Deep Green, Tarot Creek.
Hug, Zero Creek.
Real Bird, Body Field.
Good Luck, Mighty Field.
Stewart, Mighty Field.
Old Cross, Virginia.
Goes Ahead.
Bop One.
Okay, there's sixteen senators here for the quorum. One is still vacant for the Black Lodge. Again, uh, and, uh, Senator Coyote Runs was here earlier, but he'll be back. Again, uh, we're on livestream, we're recording. Lorenzo, IT technician, just got this recorded on livestream. So the next item on the agenda is the elections. First will be the Speaker of the House, the nominations, then the Secretary of the House, the nominations. After the, after that, we'll go to the committee elections and the reorganization of committees. So at this time, I'm going to open the floor for nominations for the Speaker of the House. The floor is open for any nominations. Senator Stewart from Wyallah.
I nominate, uh, Canute Old Crow. He's a veteran, and I think he'll do a good job.
There are second. Second by, uh, Pat Alden. Okay, any more nominations?
Nominate CJ Stewart, Black Lodge.
Okay, nomination for CJ Stewart. Is there a second? Going once. Second by Senator Hugs. Okay, any more nominations? First call. Second call. Okay, third call. Okay, nominations have ceased. Okay, now, we're going to ask the parliamentarian to hand out the ballots. Again, secret ballot, very much. It's a secret ballot vote. CJ Stewart.
Canute Old Crow. 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 Conrad Stewart. Canute Old Crow. CJ Stewart. Canute Old Crow. Canute Old Crow. Canute Old Crow. Canute Old Crow. CJ Stewart. Canute Old Crow. Canute Old Crow, twelve, CJ Stewart, four.
Is it thirteen or is it twelve? It's twelve, isn't it? I counted twelve. All right, okay, so it's twelve, four. Okay, congratulations. Okay, congratulations. Uh, Secretary, when I was Speaker of the House, Canute Old Crow for 2014. Again, I'm sorry, I'll just step down. But I do say a homewith that, uh, let me serve as the Speaker of the House of July 26th. But I know that Canute and the two candidates were, uh, well qualified. And so I'll just hand this over to Canute.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Oh, this is a homewith. I'm here, Speaker, we are here. I would take the cake myself, I know CJ would have also. You know, we're here almost every day, we do what we can for the branch. And I know former Speaker Conrad, all of you, uh, will all be pitching in and looking out for the Crow Tribe, assisting the chairman of its Crow Tribe. I'm here to help. Again, okay, this is a homewith.
Okay, uh, next order of business. I open the nominations for Secretary of the House. Floor is now open. Uh, Pat.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Congratulate you. Uh, I nominate Senator Robert from the Wyallah District.
Need a second? Gerald Stewart. Uh, floor is open for more nominations. Going once. Twice. Conrad.
I move to close.
Motion to close, need a second. Second by Bryce. All in favor, raise your right hands. Anonymous. Okay, Gordon, you are now the Secretary of the House, congratulations.
I want to say thank you for the nomination and the confidence that you, uh, had to, uh, nominate me as the secretary. So, you know, I'm very grateful to you guys and it's going to be a good year for us. And I appreciate everything that you've done, I hope.
Uh, floor recognizes Pat. Next speaker, Speaker, is Secretary, um, Okay, let's go, so I might recess, uh, or recognize, uh, neither.
... Uh, that, uh, one time in 2002, the history of it, there were six committees. And as time went on, we pulled away each, uh, issue and had, uh, a committee under each of these, uh, committees, like natural resources, we pulled out surface land. Then, uh, under infrastructure, we pulled out housing, we pulled out education, we pulled veterans, all these issues, but there were all these committees and all these chairmen and it was like, there was only a very few that were active and, uh, working. So we went back to the old system of going back to the 2002, the original, uh, six committees, only one was changed. But, uh, at this point in time, we went, we, we came to the union where we went to the sixth. And each of the, as you see the flow chart, these are the issues that they would be handling. It isn't like, like, let's say judicial, everybody looks at judicial and is panicking right now. But, uh, that chair, uh, for instance, right now, there, we haven't had a judicial meeting probably all year, wasn't it? All year we haven't had a judicial meeting. But there's all these issues. But, uh, I'm just trying to make it, uh, clear that it isn't that they're going to be overloaded. All these issues, like, let's say, in finance, the main issue is always about the budget. And that's what, uh, finance is always meaning about. Uh, infrastructure has been handling the, um, water code and the transportation, housing, all those issues, but they've always been, uh, pretty active and CJ is able to handle that. Uh, that's just a little history and, uh, explanation of this, uh, flow chart. Okay, at this point, I will open nominations for Economic Development Chair. Uh, floor recognizes Gerald Stewart.
Thank you, Speaker, I nominate Bryce Hugs.
Second.
Need a second, right? Duke. More nominations? Uh, Pat Alden. I nominate Senator Robert. Need a second? That's it. Any more nominations? Going once. Going twice. Floor is closed for nominations for Economic Development Chair. Staff, pass up the belts. Floor recognizes the staff to come to belt, announce the belts.
Gordon Rilbert. Gordon Rilbert. Gordon Rilbert. Bryce Hugs. Bryce Hugs. Spoiled. Bryce Hugs. Bryce Hugs. Gordon Rilbert. Bryce Hugs. Bryce Hugs. Gordon Rilbert. Gordon Rilbert. Gordon Rilbert. Bryce Hugs. Bryce Hugs. Bryce Hugs, eight, Gordon Robert, seven, one spoiled.
Congratulations, Bryce. Uh, we'll move on to the vice chairman of the committee. We, that was one of the other things that we did was, uh, we changed it from secretary to the vice chair. Uh, due to the fact that, um, uh, the secretary wasn't really being a secretary, they were more of a vice chairman, so uh, the minutes, uh, majority of the time, the minutes were being recorded or also being, uh, So uh the minutes of, uh majority of the time, the minutes were being recorded or also being uh recorded by the staff. Uh floor recognizes Conrad Stewart.
Are we open for nominations?
Okay, floor is open for nominations for a vice chair.
Oh, Mr. Speaker, this time I nominate Bryson Rogers for vice chairman for economic development.
Need a second. Great, second. Floor recognizes Bryce Hux.
Nominate Lawrence DeCreme.
Second by Duke. Any more nominations? Going once. Going twice. Floor is now closed for nominations for vice chairman, economic development. Uh staff, please hand out the ballots.
Bryson Rogers. Bryson Rogers. Lawrence DeCreme. Bryson Rogers. Bryson Rogers. Bryson Rogers. Bryson Rogers. Lawrence DeCreme. Lawrence DeCreme. Bryson Rogers. Bryson Rogers. Bryson Rogers. Bryson Rogers. Lawrence DeCreme. Lawrence DeCreme. Lawrence DeCreme. Bryson, ten, Lawrence, six.
Congratulations, Bryson, um Lawrence. Okay, move on to the next order of business, uh health and human chair. Floor is now open for nominations. Floor recognizes Conrad Stewart.
I nominate Mr. Pat Alden, Jr.
Second.
Second by Tyson. Vincent, floor recognizes. Eight, eight and eight.
Second.
Floor is open for more nominations. Going once. And twice, floor is now closed. Pat is winner by acclamation. Chairman of the Health and Human Services, congratulations, Pat. On to the next order of business, infrastructure chair.
Vice chair.
Oh, vice, health and human, vice chair, excuse me. Floor is now open. Floor recognizes Pat.
This time, I'd like to nominate Senator Burgin from the Royal District for vice chair on this issue.
Need a second, a Duke. Floor is open for more nominations. Going once. And twice, floor is now closed. Eric is vice chairman of the uh health and human committee, congratulations, Eric. On to the next order of business, infrastructure committee chair, floor is opened, first floor recognizes Pat Alden.
Uh I'd like to nominate Senator Stewart from Blackwell, district.
Need a second by Bryce. Floor is open for more nominations. Going once. Going twice, floor is now closed for nominations, congratulations, Conrad. Floor is open for sec- uh vice chairman of the infrastructure. Floor recognizes Pat.
Uh I'd like to nominate Senator Goodluck from Royal District.
Thank you.
Second by Conrad. More nominations? Going once. And twice, floor is now closed for nomination vice chairman, vice chairman. Is Brandon Goodluck, congratulations. Floor is now open for judicial chair. Floor recognizes Conrad Stewart.
I nominate Carlson Gozid.
Second by Vincent. Okay. Declination here. Any nominations for? Judicial? Floor recognizes Pat.
Uh I nominate Senator Robert.
Need a second.
Second.
Second by Conrad. More nominations? Going once. And twice, floor is now closed. Senator Realbert, uh Secretary Robert is now chairman of the judicial committee. Floor is now open for vice chair. Floor recognizes Duke.
I nominate uh Lawrence.
Nominate Lawrence. Second by Bryce. Floor is open for more nominations. Going once. And twice, floor is now closed. Congratulations, Lawrence, vice chairman of the judicial committee. Floor is now open for natural resources committee chair.
Nominate CJ.
Organize Tyson, nominate CJ Conrad, second, Bryce. Any, any more nominations? Going once, going twice, floor is now closed. Congratulations CJ. Natural resource chair. Floor is now open for vice chair, natural resource committee. Floor recognizes Conrad.
I nominate Paul Hill.
Second by Brandon. Floor recognizes Eric. Oh. More nominations? Going once. Twice, floor is now closed, congratulations, Paul, vice chair of the natural resource committee. On next order of business, finance committee chair, floor is open for nominations. Bryce, floor recognizes Bryce.
Nominate Senator Gozid.
Nominate Duke, Conrad Lawrence, second. Floor is open for more nominations. Going once. And twice, floor is now closed. Congratulations, Duke, finance chair. Okay, floor is now open for finance chair, vice chair. Any nominations?
I know Gerald, Gerald Stewart from Wyoming.
Gordon nominates Gerald, second by Brandon, floor recognizes Bryce.
I'll need uh Paul Spotted Horse.
I'll need Paul Spotted Horse, need a second. Vice Conrad. Any more nominations? Going once, going twice, floor is now closed. Staff, hand out ballots, please. You should follow your three riders' campaign.
Paul Spotted Horse. Gerald Stewart. Gerald Stewart. Paul Spotted Horse. Gerald Stewart. Paul Spotted Horse. Gerald Stewart. Paul Spotted Horse. 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 Gerald Stewart. Paul Spotted Horse. Gerald Stewart, five, Paul Spotted Horse, eleven.
Uh congratulations, Paul, uh Gerald. Congratulations, uh chairman, vice chairman. The committees, uh as you know, we had some new legislations introduced. Back in December. And we opened the door for, during the holidays, for committee meetings, but no committees uh held any uh. There were, there were no committee meetings, uh except for the water code, but water code was already in, in the old business. Uh but none of the new business has been discussed, and as you know, we need a recommendation on the floor for these committee meetings. Therefore, during the next few days, uh I would recommend you, uh chairs. Hold your, some meetings during the recess, uh which we are going to schedule here for the next few days. And I would recommend that you uh schedule, you know, committee meetings so we can come to a conclusion and recommendation. And on the order of business, uh. Second, second item on the agenda uh is recognizing officials and guests on. Chairman, uh all you staff and guests that have shown up. Uh which you know, uh watching the process being taken. Uh floor recognizes Pat.
Thank you, uh Mr. Speaker, and uh secretary members of the body. Before we kind of move along on agenda, just like to make a comment on these, uh first of all, I'd like to congratulate the new speaker and uh the secretary and all the uh. Committee chairs and vice chairmans also. But uh just to comment on, I know this is a new structure on the committees and we're kind of reorganizing here. Uh we haven't gone down this process yet, but just comment a little bit on health and human. Um I'd like to thank everyone, or elect me chairman on health and human, but for instance, I got Roman underneath health and human that uh. I've been kind of working on for a while here that we can uh keep going, plus I got vice chair. Uh Senator Burgin that's familiar with the kind of health issues too, so just delegating some of those issues in, in the committee. For instance, uh Gordon is a pretty good at education stuff and he's been working on some of those stuff too, so. Um just to delegate stuff and then uh it's a lot of stuff to handle in one committee, so. Um comment a little bit on that side, so I know vet- veterans affairs underneath that too, so. Uh we get a couple of veterans that I'll be kind of delegating that too, so. Uh but try to be active every week and have meetings every week on that.
Oh, thank you. Uh item number three is reviewing adoption of the agenda. Uh need a motion on Florida to adopt agenda. Floor recognizes Conrad.
I move, make that motion.
Need a second.
Second.
Second by Duke. Second by Duke. All in favor, raise your hands. Sixteen zero zero. Uh, number four is reviewing approval of the journal, uh, at this point in time, I will make a motion to move this to the last order of business. Uh, so everybody gets a chance to review, uh, adopt the journals. Second.
Second.
Second by Duke, all in favor, raise your hands. You have a list, thank you. Uh, that was my duty as a Secretary and I apologize for, uh, not completing that in the orderly time to. For you to review it, but it will be, uh, completed for your review. Next item on the agenda is receive reports, uh. Speaker. Um, uh, maybe, uh, Duke, who was the former Speaker of this past, uh, few months, uh, would like to say a few words. Floor recognize Duke.
Uh, balishu wey chha, oh, and, uh, report to that.
Yep.
Okay, uh. Well, uh, congratulations, uh, Mr. Speaker and then also, uh, new Secretary Gordon Reilberg. Uh, koyi aga hirka wadu, in, uh, uh, July twenty-sixth, eresh go nosa. Uh, in, uh, uh, the, the reports was that we had, uh, the elections, uh, the. Before the elections was the October session primaries, then on the, uh, sessions kadeh. But during that, in the meantime, we wanted to change the order of the committees, the reorganizations. So I believe you and myself, Mr. Secretary, that we've, uh, that we've. Looking for this direction of reorganizing because the reason. Anachajesh kerekya kau. Uh, baolawr, mahatdekaas, dishkiwadeh sa, bagun. Azaloge shtakchya domi patu, korek, dakwshigyaas, khatidja bakchya maajik. Begirawoke, yonke, emiuk, diirase, dija bakchya maajik, kiuk. Emadiuk, dakchya shittu, eh, in, uh, baligwahe wlaspa, baliwahi waaluk, diakhwa, kiuk, maew, bawagaik, dera. Eh, in, uh, kan, bazaa bah, baduswaxiwa, bawala, riresh, kyo, in, uh, buk, karwo wlaspa, karwo, in, uh, buk, patishiu. Eh, in, uh, maraygo, eh, spawmasubos, kwanagodisai, ha, buk, kiuk. In, uh, gey, gretchik, kalaro, ko mahado, in, uh, irage, eh, kore, irage, the committees, kadeh, eh, uh. Orientation, then we went had that orientation. Cause bawmasubow, in, uh, orientation and leadership training, kadeh, diwur edam. Awededawak kaut, sa, bilyulugalachtuk, anirakachadush, uh, balachbag, anirakachadush, uh, alachtuk. That you are leaders, no longer employees, employees, karegi, they clock in eight to five. Etta leadership, na, baliwahi, that twenty-four seven, three hundred and sixty-five days, korek. And, kiuk, karwo, i, itcha, wajwaawr, itcha, duhap, eh, bawr, barer, karib leadership training, kadeh, diwuk. Eh, aga, wabi, zakusar, akutbawgaw, majik, we need that leadership training, kana, emiuk. Dera, irage, eh, emabachatik, shet, napishke, in, uh, irage, uh, waw, korek, uh, kuna, bachiwake. Uh, istisa, eh, babahe, awedem muruchbak. Eh, aga, hreneyuk, uh, Lorenzo, stoneya, in, uh, shehru, kuluana. Diem, eh, kuniwuk, dera, eh, irage, speaker, wakus, awedem, kuni, bachiwuk, shidwa, em, kuniwuk, da, zeh. Uh, dera, eh, korek, pickup, kore, uh, bagal, diwawakuk, dera, credit card, kore, kuniwak. Eh, paymshik, in, uh, wear and care, kore, uh, wedekmak, diwawakuk. Eh, maaniwak, maawakadaw, in, uh, kukkale, uh, bawusakat, bishkishkiwad, in, uh, go Speaker of the House, dera, eh, Secretary. Eh, in, uh, ameche, amaw, bawrisu, girek, ko mahusiu. Emiuk, in, uh, credit card, kadeh, kuk, bakukbemaajik, eh, gey, gila, eh, bakukbemaajik. Eh, in, uh, uh, ameche, zeh. Kuske, wolasbu, da, giwusu, irage, niwuk, eh, in, uh, irage, bagal, eh, bachwa, wedek. Uh, dera, in, uh, bawalaw, committees, kadeh, uh, mayal, chkerere, dakruturuk, barer. Kuniwuk, batet, kotbeshet, batet, kore, bakunusaduk, her, neuk, mainaiduk, eh, gey, bawalaw, karirischak, kuksuruk, barer. Dera, kiuk, baliwari, keshkesh, kore, dier, kalaro, ko, emiuk, majik, uh, secretary, dier, hiribawuk. Kore, in, kuske, wolasbu, da, riwusuk, ma, kaya, karama. Dera, eh, kola, cause of living adjustment, kushkere, kun, uh, in, uh. Irage, awedem, balachbag, alachtir. Eh, aga, in, uh, Speaker of the House, ulkro. Eh, aga, amalakrut, chesh, balachbag, balay, nieruk, barer, eh, in, uh, versus an employee, eh, aga. Dig dishbora, your paycheck is your paycheck, IRA, you stare to suck, Indian, uh, individual retirement, kadeh, kusstare to suck. Dera, social security, kadeh, you're all volunteering, dishbora, dishbora, kiuk. You're volunteering that, eh, is bachwa, go niwawak, niwawing. Bim, uh, Indian Health Service, Bahiro, awedek, uh, BIA, Bahiro, po shir. Balaysang, in, uh, eh, dishbora, so, seben, bachi, him. Na, ishdwa, mishbora, wachhi, wadu, ishdwa, mishbora, wachhi, ma, etta, takchya, eh, wu, irage, mishbora. Niwakuk, eh, kotak, iha, zoda, fresh benefits, karege, fresh benefits, karege, bawaw, eh, na. Kole, irage, bishkiwuk, uh, bishki, uh, bishkisavu, eh, bale, pila, gum, kara, social security, kare, I'm volunteering all that. Social security, raga, social security, bawkutchere, maajik. Kamish, balawkutcheg, malawkutcheg, irage, irxbirubok, eskin, kopi, eruk, ma. Emiuk, bazaa bat, in, uh, i, kola, kua, cause of living adjustment, karwo, eh, kiuk. Post aden, percentage, kadeh, every year, bachiwawuk. Eh, irage, September, uh, which, December, in, uh, balisho, kana, kiuk, kiuk, kun, uh. Balay, ya, kusam, dakkatbuk, in, uh, uh, LR, kadeh, legislative resolution, emiuk. Eh, ma, bazaa bat, diuk, balachbag, irage, balay, kogaw, majik, computer, kau, shkira, in, uh, wawak, eh. Amawakur, eh, balay transparent, karek, ma, karwoe. Eh, mina, wale, wad, bishituk, kara, machadaw, shkamray, gata, kama, magusakat, bishte, balachbag, eh. Awahavet, baw, kusavagaw, gairo, sheh, kogra, go duk, eh, anachajerek. Sa, hin, niham, na, sa, hin, na, chere, khudar, eh, kya kau, majik, anachadaw, eh, kya kau, kiuk. Karwoe, you're a big target, majik, eh, karih, irage, balaspak, dera. Taka, bawri, um, mure, in, karik, chewak, itisa, in, uh, mari, ba, maeriusum. Karwoe, uh, eh, uh, ayah, lasa, yaxa. Doc. It's kind of a hammer, eh, bazaa bat, bazaw, kipai. Emiuk, balay, bawwi, emaori, usum, karwoe, eh, bap, balay, kor, brisa, irage, machadaw, bigchulu, barer. Bawalaw, irage, committees, kadeh, bali, irage, agaruk, thome, idur, gretchik, na, balay, balay, karwoe. Uh, chewak, bachewawak, eh, irage, appointment, saw, shte, in, uh. Amaori, ghas, shuk, appointment, saw, shel, nes, uh, akira, karerek, kub, chotre, mawalaw, emiuk, ameche, gup, uh, kuchore. A drop of a hat, majik, eh, special sessions, kare, eh, niwusha, irage, bala, wadam. Special sessions, diwaw, gaw, i, godesh, irage, eh, in, uh, ispira, eh, chere. Eh, nek, di shobat. Legislation, law, uh, bayget, dakkatushte, kiuk, in, uh, avire, avire, emiuk, committee, kare, avire, bawalaw, kargon, arugokome, wu. Korosan, amaray, ririz, kadeh, wu. Eh, karwoe, irage, wakurusaw. Awedem, uh, chisisur, bairi, ghasusum, karwoe, gera, kiuk. Eh, aga, itchik, anachadaw, begirawoke, itchik, eh, itcha, eh, wu, na, irage, araxa, bishsh, awa, irageram, karagu, shku. Karwe, wasi, tak, karizasesh, ame, itchwas, karwo, kub, awabuk, em. Itcha, awuk, wuluk, kiuk, kosh, irage, na ispira, eh, itcha, eh, di shobat. Mawalaw, um, azalagodu, shovtak, na, avire, wuluk, itcha, duhap, eh, bawr, barer, emiuk. Uh, karwo, bazaa bat, eh, da, uh, in, eh, balay, wad, rivede, rirus, eh, hommus.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Carlson, who's ahead, uh, that's. Past couple of years, I was Secretary of the House and I'll make my report right now on the previous quarter, uh. As you know, we had our elections and I was very fortunate to get reelected and we had our inauguration. And I just wanted to commend the staff for all that they did, uh, a whole bunch of people, two, uh. And congratulate the, congratulate the newly elected for coming on board. And like I told Tyson, when we first won, went over, shook his hand and said, now it's time to roll up our sleeves and get to work. And, uh, myself, uh, if okay, just gonna like. Like, like Carlson said, we thought, you know, with the newly elected coming in, it was hard when we first come in because, uh. We didn't really understand some of the process, so we thought it was good to have an orientation so we can get you guys. Cut up the speed as much as we could, so that way we could get, get the ball rolling, uh, more fluidly. And regards to the committees, uh. Uh, Conrad, I really commend him because he was very active this past quarter, working on the water code almost, uh, several times a week. And unfortunately, we lost one of our committee members coming out there, that was on a, on a committee. Uh, in regards to, he was with the executive, uh, late, uh, Steve Stevens, he was very instrumental in getting that ball rolling. Along with that committee, uh, the ad hoc committee. And they were very, uh, active on that and they still are, still working on that, that, that is an old business and, uh. For the information of, uh, newly elected, uh. That's the, the reason for sending it to committees so we can, uh, introduce it on the floor. Adopt it, the, the, the Chair of that committee will send it to committee, uh, to keep, keep it active and keep it, uh, uh, working on the. Adjustments on whatever needed to be done, so that, that, that way, once it's done, if. The next committee, or the next, uh, session is too long, then we can call for a special session, uh. Uh, get it passed. Um, another. Well, the come out buyback, uh, he was working on that too, uh, some of the buyback issues that are going on. And that, that, that's still ongoing also, and Gordon here has been working on the gaming. Lot of the. Issues with economic development, Bryce has been keeping his hands on, feet to the fire on that too. But I'm not trying to do your reports for you, but, uh, with the reorganization of these committees, uh. Now, it's going to be a little difficult to try to go back to, uh, have them speak on their behalf, so. And, yeah, thank you, Carlson, uh, one of the, one of the things that we did, uh, with Sherry's idea was, uh. First, we stopped making, uh, the old, old business copies over and over and over, putting them into the package. Of each session, uh, because it was a good idea to put all old business into a different, uh. Folder than that, the blue folder that you have on your desk, that's all the old business, so that way you can always keep that on hand. So you don't, you're not having to refer back to the old, uh, folders, which we used to do, it was, uh. Cumber some and took a lot of paperwork, making copies for each packet, every, every session. But, uh, anyway, that's, like I said, I wanted to commend the staff in regards to the, uh, orientation and getting the session ready. They had, they had everything ready before they took the holiday break, so I appreciate that and commend them, like, like I said, uh. So now, uh, onto the. Committee reports. I will give the floor, I don't have a. I'll go with economic development, uh, Bryce, you were the previous Chair and you're a current Chair, so I'll give you the floor.
All right, oh, Speaker, Secretary, congratulations, body, guest, executive, um. Again, economic development, there's, um, upcoming, upcoming, um, things coming up, so, um. I mean, well, I'll can, I'll have committee meetings this week, next week, we'll try to, um. Whatever's on the agenda, we'll, we'll dig, dig into it, before it was kind of, it was kind of hard trying to come together. Senate, Legislative and, uh, Executive, and I think now. We got one year to, to work on what we need to, eh, mager, wager, when, when we think of economic development and things start. Um, like new construction or like whatever economic development for each district. When it starts, um, coming up, ilasit, ilasit, tliuk, kiri, um. That's why I want to run for Chair to, to make that happen together. So we're doing it for the people, we're not doing it for ourselves, na, amalu, anila, kshesh, bilun, we, we do it. It, uh, the ones that, um. Ilitchilash, vaxlagi, go, and that's, that's what I want to see, so, all right, oh.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson, uh. I'm just going with this, uh, flow chart in regards to economic development, who was underneath, uh, who had that committee before. Next one will be gaming, which was Gordon at the time, so, you're in the floor.
Thank you, Speaker, Members of the Body, Executive branch, guests, Seaver. Good to see you, good morning, back to New Year. My gaming is side guy, you know, we worked. Last January, Glish, Kedron, I was elected into gaming. Uh, we had meetings almost every week concerning the ordinance. Haksish, uh, Bihala, Duqits, there's a lot, uh, couple issues that we still need to work on, on the ordinance itself. But the main part of it's, uh, been passed here, and I think we're going to come back and pass that. Geroch, Speaker.
Yes.
And then, uh.
Ordnance and we'll get back on that. So we need the newly elect are interested, I got some copies of the current draft we got going.
Thank you, uh, the next two is Ethics, Fish Wildlife and Parks, but uh, uh, Manuel is no longer here with us or Marlon with Secretary Arnold's Kyle runs is uh, out right now. So we'll put those on hold.
I can, I can speak to some of that on that.
Okay.
Real quick if I may.
Sure.
I just wanted to, Mr. Speaker, Secretary. First of all, congratulations, um. I want to speak to the issue of the Fish and Wildlife in Parks, um, that's gonna be an ongoing, um, negotiation. Uh, right now, um, as we speak, they've been notified, um, Chairman O'Call and I, uh, sponsored some legislation stating that we are gonna exercise our, our treaty authority in the hunting. And so, I did give the resolution to Mike Valeski at the time, there was, was, um, Secretary Not Afraid of Del Abador and I forget who else was all there, but we did make notification to the state and we did think we were, we thought we were actually gonna have to put on armor and get ready for the fight, but as soon as we told them we were gonna, um, hunt on our, under the sixty-eight and start going from there to the fifty-one, because the fifty-one, the reason why we retained the, the hunting rights in the sixty-eight treaty, um, the, the chiefs back then had signed the sixty-eight retaining their right to hunt in the fifty-one. So it ties together. So just for the newly elect's sake, um, that's still, that falls under natural resources currently. So we'll be going to the state's side and negotiating this. And it's not necessarily really a negotiation, what we're gonna do is the state has already agreed that we will establish a policy that they will go by. So basically what's gonna happen is we'll take our own game warden, they'll know, they'll, they'll be notified, they'll have a gr- game warden there and we go in first, they're trying to tell us to can, they really, really didn't say it, but they kinda leaned towards more of, um, buffalo hunt. But, um, we've never even went hunting regardless whether it's an elk or buffalo over there. So, I didn't know, I did, um, tell the director of, um, Fish and Wildlife, I said, my, my treaty right doesn't just say buffalo, it says hunting, so if we see a bull elk or we're, we're gonna get him. And what he is, what they are kind of afraid of, and they did explain was that, that, um, if, if, if there is, say, um, say there's like, um, a number of, um, buffalo or, or, um, elk or whatever, they're, they're afraid we're gonna wipe them out. They, they wanna, that, that's kinda something that they, they brought out that they're afraid that we'll just go in there and they know we have the treaty right, they know the state can't step in, in our way. And the US Fish and Wildlife from, from sources, I guess they were asking questions and they said, are the crow gonna, are the crow asserting their treaty hunting rights? And the answer to that question was yes, from the US Fish and Wildlife. So US Fish and Wildlife is, is made aware from the state, they are a little afraid because, um, under the, under our treaty, we can fish and hunt in the Yellowstone Park. So that's something that they're, they're kinda getting ready for on the defense, that they think we're gonna go into the, um, the Yellowstone Park and hunt. And which by rights, we do have that right. So just to let you all know, State of Montana Fish and Wildlife, Mike Valeski, has been notified, they know what's going on and they're, they're, they're standing behind us hundred percent. Because it's, uh, it, it opens the door. Basically now, the other tribes are being kinda pushed out, they call them welfare farmers, those ones that, um, welfare farmers and ranchers, I guess, the ones that lease a lot of the federal ground that's right there in that area. And they're getting kind of upset because the, the different tribes are coming in, there's the Shoshone Bannock, they've got a treaty right to hunt there, and then there's Nespers, they've got a treaty right to hunt, and there's, um, CSKT, that's, um, Sadiqutni Tribe, they've, they've got a, a hunting right there. And then there's the, the, um, Umatela, they've got a hunting right. And all these areas that, that they get to hunt on is actually the eighteen eighty-two ceded, under the eighteen sixty-eight Fort Laramie Treaty, which is, even though they, they get to hunt in those areas, tho- those are our grounds that, that originated our, our, our original boundaries for reservation, right? That kinda goes back to our priority date. But even outside of that siege trip, it still goes to the fifty-one treaty, which ties into the sixty-eight, so what, what the other tribes, and we've kinda spoke to some of them, they want, they want the strength of the crow to be able to go in there and hunt those areas as well, but they wanna go in there with an intertribal treaty between the tribes. And so this is something that, that we'll be moving forward on and, you know, just to speak to that issue, I know that Fish and Wildlife and Lucky, he was in, um, he's the chairman, but now it's under natural resources, so I just wanted to make that known, that this is something that's coming up and I appreciate involvement from everyone here. Cause when I did go up there, there was, we, we asked everyone to go up and at the time there was, we didn't have no, very, very, no involvement, so, I mean, something this big, we have to be involved, I mean, we're talking about exerting our, our authority here. So I hope.
Thank you, um, at this point in time, everybody's probably getting hungry, but before I call recess, uh, with the permission of the body, I would like to recognize Don McKenzie to, uh, say a few words, I guess he's here to, uh, speak to, uh, some issues, uh, but, uh, like to have a motion from the floor to, uh, allow me to do that. Motion by Conrad, seconded by Pat, all in favor? Yes, thank you, uh, after this, we'll, I'll call recess for lunch and then we'll come back and we'll hit with infrastructures report right after lunch, thank you. Uh, floor recognizes Don.
That's. All right, my left hand man here, um, well, I, I just thank you for this time, gentlemen, um, ladies and gentlemen, uh, the reason why I'm here, I won't keep this, I won't keep you long, I know it's kind of deep, but, um, reason I'm here is to present, um, an economic development for the, for the, for the, uh, entity of the Crow Tribal Administration and Legislation. Um, as you know, you've probably heard of it, heard about it, but, uh, about three weeks ago, there was a meeting in Billings and I, I came, I was there to, uh, to listen in. And, um, I guess you might know who my uncle is, he's a councilman Phelan for the West Segment area, Man- in Mandari, Mandari area, West Segment, North Segment, East Segment, South Segment. We are in the West Segment area. And as you know, it's booming there. Oil is being extracted from the ground, I always say drag, pulling dragons from the ground. And, um, I'll get right to it, we, we need lumber to build homes. That, that was one of the biggest things that everyone says, that I've been through countless, uh, uh, people running for political office, gotta have homes, gotta have homes, gotta have homes, but nothing's ever come of it. Well, Councilman Phelan's got tired of it and he needs to put homes in his segment and he's willing to work with the Crow Tribe and the legislators, powers that be, um, to build them homes. I just got off the phone with them, um, we proj- oh, he projected where they, they were talking about a hundred and sixty homes. But that, he, um, informed me, that number has grown up to a thousand homes. And I talked to Butcher Era, I said, well, I said, that, that number you talked about in Billings went from one sixty to a thousand homes on the Fort virtual Indian Reservation. As, um, like I said, it's booming, a lot of people are, are moving back home and, you know, it's Indian country, everybody needs a home, you know, that's some, something that everybody needs. You know, CJ, we had, we had nu- numerous conversations about this out there at the mine and we, you know, we talked about the homes, you know, if there, if there was a way, there's lumber here, you know, if there's something that we could work, I, I guess I'm the mediator of, uh, of, of trying to get this thing together. And, um, another thing, another, I, I will touch on it real quick, is, um, been working with Seabird since April and we want, we're projecting to start a chunking, a trucking company to haul, it's called Patriot, owner's name, name is David Brown Transport Solutions. We would, uh, help with the, with the transport of the lumber. And, um, I don't know how we, we do this, but we, we'll work, work together to make it, um, work to that common goal. But, um, with this, with this trucking company, I, I would like to, I'd say it right now, is to make use of our tribal employees, Crow, Hidatsa, Mandan, Crow, Hidatsa and Rickra. Um, get operators in these trucks, these trucks will just constantly move, there's no reason why these trucks cannot move. Um, I guess our first venture would be hauling this lumber to North Dakota, but then this opens up to a lot of, a lot of avenues hauling the transport of, of your oil, your rock, um, equipment, just basically, this infrastructure in North Dakota is just booming right now. And, uh, I don't see why we can't work together to, for, for our people. That's why we're elected, or you're elected, I will run for council when I'm over there, but right now I'm getting my feet wet. Uh, I am, I work with my uncle quite a bit, um, I grew up with him, I, um, you know, I know how he thinks and I, I spent, uh, the weekend over there to talk with him about this, but, um, I'll let Seabird take the floor and I just thank you for your time and thank you.
Oh, floor recognizes Seabird Forge.
Yeah, what he said. I'm kidding, um, it must be a part of me, it, uh, since, uh, the start of the new administration we came in and we actually went into a partnership, uh, back in January with Patriot and we've been trying to get these trucks over to North Dakota to haul all this oil, I mean, as you guys know, um, even the Fort virtual reservation, they finally got their first per capita just this December, first one in thirty-one years. And they're bringing them in probably three hundred and sixty mill a year, just on their oil and they finally, finally got a per capita this year and then just before Christmas, we established an MOU, uh, memorandum of understanding and they wanna work with us on any kind of services that we can provide because they're so shorthanded out there and there's so many jobs. And, and again, they, they're looking to gut out some of the old homes and remodel them, they're looking to build new ones, it's, it's, it's going nuts over there, I went, he took me on a tour of the Bakken. Man, it's a circus, holy smokes, there's just so much money to be made, both for the tribe, both individually, you name it, and they're willing to work with us and so Bryce is one of the issues that we're gonna have to bring up and we're gonna have to be able to get some crews together, they want us to establish, uh, EPA for them over there, they don't have one. And that's something we can look into, we can establish some, uh, quick response crews because these guys, you've seen that train blow up, it spilled a lot of oil, we could be one of the first ones to get out there and clean it up, makes, you know, creates some jobs for, for all involved and, uh, I think it's a good step forward, a good way to start two thousand fourteen, I wanted to welcome the new senators, by the way, I hope all is well, don't be scared because we, we don't bite too hard. And so, uh, uh, at any rate, I just kinda wanted to touch with you guys on that, uh, throughout some of these meetings and, uh, sub, subcommittee meetings and whatnot, uh, we'll get more into detail, but, uh, just so that you guys are aware that we're, we're looking to go, move a lot of our resources over to that, that part of the country to, uh, try to tap into some of the revenue that's coming in over there, so, good to, to, well, thanks for the opportunity and I believe something, I hope.
Uh, floor recognizes Conrad. Thank you, Don, Seabird.
Oh, Mr. Speaker, um, Secretary and members, um, as you know, Mr. Speaker, you were in attendance and, and, um, Secretary Rupert, at that time, we were, we had these meetings and, um, just to let, um, these gentlemen know that Secretary Not Afraid and different ones had meetings with, um, Councilman Phelan and, and we had phone calls back and forth as well with, um, Councilman Phelan and, and, uh, Councilman Hall, um, Ken Hall and then so I was, I was already, they delivered the, the, the timber assessment already to me as well and being at infrastructure and natural resources, handle housing and the timber. Um, just to let them know, economic development will be, we're gonna be entertaining the, the corporation codes and so that'll be the avenue we'll be going through, but through the housing, establishing the housing and the natural resource through the timber, that'll be through, um, infrastructure and natural resources, so I've already been given the, the information, the paperwork and everything, as soon as the meetings were done, they brought them over to me, so I, um, I have that in review right now, so, and we'll be entertaining it here as soon as we start getting moving on the corporation codes.
All right. Uh, thank you CJ, I think what I'm going to do right at this point in time is, uh, delay lunch for a few minutes, have, have you do your infrastructure, natural resources report and then we'll recess until, uh, next week, Monday, in the meantime, you guys can schedule your committee meetings for the rest of this week so we can get the, uh, recommendations on the, uh, issues on the new business, uh, so at this point in time, I'll ask Senator Conrad, uh, to submit his report, thank you.
Oh, Mr. Speaker, Secretary, um, what I'm gonna do here is, um, because it goes hand in hand, it's the natural resources, the infrastructure, I'm gonna go ahead because it's, it's basically hand in hand there, so I'll go ahead and make my, um, um, my report together. Um, November nineteenth, we had a, um, negotiation, we, we kinda kicked off the negotiations with, um, executive, legislative as well with Williston Basin and, um, so we've got that, the negotiations on that underway. I know the newly elect were just now coming into the office, so it was real good, um, time to kinda get, get their feet wet and shoot, it was, I, I, I appreciated their support because they were all here and at that time, we, we started our negotiations concerning the, the Williston Basin pipeline of, um, as you all know, we don't have a, a map just yet on, on that by itself, we do have a map for the Northwest, um, energy negotiations, but the Williston Basin Pipeline runs directly through the reservation and that was something we were talking about, not just the, not just the, um, uh, uh, basic, uh, basic negotiations, it was something that we were looking at, um, moving forward on with, uh, you know, we got a pipeline running directly from the Bakken to Crow. I mean, there's some things that we can do here that we gotta think outside the box and so we let them know that what our intents were, what our thoughts were and how we're gonna go about this, but that, that there is, um, moving forward. Again, on the twenty-fifth of November, we had the, another, um, sit down, um, internally with, concerning the Williston Basin and we're still moving forward on that, the, on the December thirteenth, the twenty, the eighteenth, nineteenth and twentieth, they were all water code meetings, but on the twentieth, we had Northwest, and of course, like, uh, Speaker, you stated, um, late Steve Stevens flatbed, he, he was, um, pretty instrumental in a lot of the negotiations for, on our side here, he was on the water team, he was, you know, instrumental in the past from the establishment of the compact and coming into the, the newly, um, passed constitution, we, he was part of the water team as well. And so, you know, and he just passed on and, and so we're gonna, we, we, we thought about having a meeting this last Friday, but, um, we couldn't get everybody together soon enough, so we just had to bag it, we're gonna have to go back into, um, this water code and that, that there by itself, um, it's gonna be, we're looking at four months, less than four months to get that passed. And right now, there's a lot of issues at hand, there's a lot of issues. Um, that, that by itself is, once we get it passed, that water code has to, uh, pass muster with Secretary of, um, of, uh, Indian Affairs and so as soon as we get moving on that, we got a lot of it completed, there's still some language there that we gotta plug in, but it deals with the enforcement and, uh, different liabilities that are, that are in it, we have to spell a lot, a lot of jurisdiction in, in the water code that, you know, conform with the settlement. On the nineteenth, we had a, um, Northwest Energy negotiations and Northwest, um, Energy Representatives were here. And again, we had some thoughts about, we talked about purchasing the line, we talked about, um, flowing different material down that line regardless whether it's gas or oil and utilizing the right of ways for different purposes, try to get some of our oil into, into the refineries and Billings. And, uh, both of these lines, whi- whether it's Williston and whether it's, whether it's Northwestern, we're trying to get our, our residents, our tribal residents, whether it's tribal or whether it's non-tribal, but we're trying to make sure that we can get gas to their houses so then that way, they don't have to haul propane and have to deal with, um, the weather or have to deal with paying four hundred dollars every time that, you know, they get, you know, for propane, it's pretty expensive, so we're trying to make sure that the ones down Arrow Creek get it and on Williston, it'll be the ones all the way coming through here, all the way through the valley here, from Black Lodge to Wyolla, we have Williston and so we'll have, um, we're trying to make sure that everyone gets services so that way they don't have to deal with the, with the, um, propane, the purchasing of it. And I think this is something that we can do, this is something that they think they can do and eventually in the near future, we're looking at sitting down and this, this is soon, so we gotta look at visiting with M D U and finding out how we can go about this. So these are some of the three entities that we need to deal with, it's that Williston Basin, Northwestern Energy and M D U, Montana Dakota Utilities. So these, these three entities are the ones we're gonna be work, working with individually and then trying to size up our negotiation, so then that way, the, the thing is too, is for your constituency, if they've already signed with, um, any kind of a right of way with any, any one of these pipelines, whether it's Northwestern or whether it's Williston Basin, if the tribe negotiates, and we probably will, we'll probably negotiate on a better deal per round than whatever the individual lot T has negotiated at, they'll get the difference later on, so if they got into a bad deal now, it'll correct itself once the tribe fin- finalizes their negotiation. So that's something that can be relayed if there's questions asked, so, um, and I, of course, I encourage whoever's, whoever's the constituency to come in, the committee meetings are open. Um, going back to issues on the hill, now of course, we talked about the coal liquids, but now, um, that's kinda hand in hand with, um, Indian tax production credit. Right now, that's in the extenders bill and it's gonna be presented, we're hoping it'll pass on a permanent level and if it does pass, it's gonna expedite a lot of, lot of advantages, lot of opportunity for the Crow Tribe in, in the area of coal liquids and, and development, it's gonna just make, it's just gonna make, make things a lot better for us, the, the reason being why we have to go with this tax credit is it puts us in a position in the market where we're more marketable and we have more of an advantage right now with Westmoreland, with the Sarkic Creek Coal Mine, we have a rail advantage of three hundred and fifty miles, so we gotta, we gotta look at other advantages that puts us in a position so then that way we can get our coal out to the market. It puts us over three hundred and fifty miles over what Powder River is already, can supply. So the transportation costs a lot per, per car, per ton. And so right now, and just to let everyone know, we do have coal going to the, to, um, the state of Washington and it will be servicing that power plant till twenty twenty-five until it phases out. As you all know, Obama, he's, um, he's deadlined a lot of the power plants, the older ones and so in, in Centralia, Washington, the Transalta contract, we've got that, we've got that till twenty twenty-five, you know, phase out, it's a, it's an increase of two million to three million a year, so it helps, it puts us at a, amount at the coal mine to eight to nine million a year. And then we have the track one coal lease, that's another hundred and, uh, forty million ton that we're gonna be extracting here and that's gonna be within the next five years plus. Then of course, there's the Cloud Peak, we're still in the surface, surface agreement stages where they're doing all the assessments, the cultural surveys, the geologicals, all that and drilling sites, they're gonna do the drilling sites, they're gonna do the drilling program, once they get that established, then they'll look at where they need to go, what's feasible, there's Squirrel Creek, there's Tanner, there's, um, Lower Youngs. And for some of the ones that aren't familiar with the, the lease, whether it's Westmoreland or whether it's Cloud Peak, I've already set up, uh, um, some, some, um, tours in Cloud Peak and tours with Westmoreland and we're gonna have some explanation on both sides, Westmoreland's gonna, um, explain the, the lease and they're gonna give us their financials, it's gonna be a report. And so it is with, um, Cloud Peak, so they're gonna be doing the same and we'll have lunch there, whether Cloud Peaks, either they're talking in, in, um, Sheridan or just right there on site. So these are some, some things that we're looking at right now with, with the committee. So we'll have that here soon, we just tried to pin some, pin down some dates, so I'm looking at actually the week of the twentieth for those dates after the session. So we can go ahead and have those, those tours for the benefit of the newly elect, we'll get you guys up to speed on what the, what the contract's all about, um, Cloud Peak, just to touch it up, we're looking at, you know, I know Junior brought it out, there's, during the option period, per option, we get seventy-five thousand overall, total per, over the three options and then once execution has occurred, not, doesn't we have to be on all three, it could be on one, then it'll slip over to a hundred and fifty thousand in, in the scholarships. And then there's the bonuses, there's the payment upon execution, so a lot of these things will be explained and we'll have, we'll have a kind of a cheat sheet, term sheet for you guys, so then that way you'll have it, I know that people are gonna ask you questions and it's, you need to understand this, so then that way you can, um, convey it to your constituency, because there's a lot of money gonna be coming in and a lot of opportunity, all the jobs belong to the Crows and that forty-three thousand acres they bought from CX Ranch, um, it's exclusively hunting rights are for the Crows there. And so the biggest thing too, I wanted to mention is that this is the first time in any agreement that I've known of that, um, the Crow Tribe hasn't left their, their, um, tribal members out on a limb. We passed the amendment in there, in the, in the agreement itself, that the, the base rate, the market, the marketable, the, the comparable value per acre is runs about twenty-three fifty per acre, where before the B I A would come in, they might buy that ground for three thousand acre or two thousand acre, but then they hit the reservation, they turn around and they'll say, well, that acre's only worth a hundred bucks, we'll pay you a hundred and fifty, we'll do you a favor, that kinda attitude, or, you know, five hundred for dry land to eight hundred and then thousands, two thousand for, uh, P A lands, irrigable lands. And so these are some of the things, right now, under tru- on, on the trust land, you have a marketable value, a comparable of twenty-three fifty per acre, because that's what they bought CX Ranch for, so, and on all these lands that they have purchased to go after the extraction of the coal, the Crow Tribe has the first right of refusal to purchase all these lands back to, to, um, increase the land base. So we have all that and we can actually, um, negotiate, every, every ten years, we'll be, be negotiating, we can open up the door for negotiations every ten years. And so this is something that we, there's a lot of, um, um, give and take, but we ended up with ninety-eight percent of the perfect deal that we stood on. Track one, the explanation will be there for the, the lease, again, we'll have term sheets, things that we can refer to and any questions that you have, ahead of time, I'll try to get those term sheets for you, so then that way, when we, when we do have these meetings, you'll have something. you'll have something, you know, in, in your head that, about what, what maybe you have questions. But at that time, at this time, we're just where we're at, and of course, with what Don and Seabird brought in, that's gonna be another issue that's gonna be coming up in natural resources. I do have the information on those, on the assessment on the timber, and we do need to move on this corporation code. So that, they're, they all work together, it works, it works hand in hand, it's a big deal. So with that, Speaker, um, I, I might've missed some things, but overall, I think we, we covered a lot of ground.
Thank you Conrad, um, I'd like to recognize, uh, Secretary of the Crow Tribe, Mr. Not Afraid, thanks for coming. And I wanted to give a special recognition to Kelsey Packinaw, he's a consultant to Tex Hall, which is a, do you call him chairman or president over there, with the three affiliated? Chairman, uh, Tex Hall. So anyway, thank you for your attendance, thanks for coming. I don't know if you wanted to say a few words or, or not, maybe give you a couple minutes before we take off for lunch.
I'm understanding why you're lunch, so. Especially over by that door. Anyway, thank you for allowing me to say a few words, you know, uh. When I was a kid, I, I was raised in Billings, I went to Billings Senior High School and graduated from there, and went to, uh, it was Eastern then, and I went to college there. And, uh, you know, talking about your coal and your royalties and all of that, you know. Way back, you know, in like seventy-two, you know, when I was going to college at Eastern, you'd see these, these stickers. It'd say Coal, the week, you know. And that was before they had a full understanding of that resource and what it meant to the Crow Tribe. You know, and, uh, you know, I feel that, you know, all of us have come a long way in D N R, you know, our natural resources, and how we preserve them, and how we utilize them, and how we profit from them. And so it's, it's, uh, it's, uh, it's something that has come a long way, and that we're realizing that money, all the tribes are now. And we call it, uh, it's, uh, but, uh, it's, uh, it's good to be here, and I've got a lot of relatives here, I've got a lot of friends here. You know, being raised in Billings and going to Eastern, I, I've got a lot of people who I've, you know, went to school with and everything from here. And, uh, before, my first twenty years, I was, I was a police officer. And in seventy-two and seventy-three, uh, I worked here. I graduated from the England Police Academy in seventy-three, and I, I worked here for the Crow Tribe in those, those two years. Uh, just a little skinny guy, so probably nobody recognized me, but, uh, that was, uh, that was, you know, back in those days. And I'm a retired Tarot Director from Yakima, and so, you know, we're, back there, our tarot is involved in everything. So the negotiations you're, you're going through, and the preference for your tribal members, keeping them employed, because the tribe can employ everybody. And third-party employment is becoming more and more critical, especially as we become a, a financial leader in, in our areas, in this, in this south-central Montana. You know, some of the biggest employers now are the tribes. And so when you look out for your people through tarot, and you make it explicit, and put it in the specification of contract, that you will hire a minimum of whatever you wanna set it at, Crow, Crow members, Crow tribal members. That way, when you get done at the end of the year, your tarot director come in and say, hey, my gosh, you know, our people worked uh, ten thousand hours on this project, you know, our median rate, our salary was twenty-five bucks an hour, and we brought an additional eight point five million in income to the Crow tribal people without the tribe employing them. You know, and that's, that's, that's a big paramount thing for the tribe, to see that this, this third-party, uh, the third-party, uh, entities coming on to the reservation, pay their dues. You know, because they've always done it, got around it before. And that's where you need to up your training programs and look out for your people, because you gotta get all of these things in place, you know, you've got time. Right now, when you identify projects coming up to get them trained, to get, you know, to get the people there. Because as a tarot director, that was my, my biggest thing was, you know, seeing when I could call five guys and put them on a job tomorrow, and they're making thirty-five dollars an hour. You know, because, and when we go in there and negotiate a big contract, and we get, you know, three or four hundred thousand dollars in tarot fees. You know, we, we like to see that, and as a tarot director, you don't get any bonuses for that, you just get your salary. But, you know, you're working for your people, you're working for the pe- the little guy down there who never had an opportunity to get a job in, in construction, you know, these different places. As you all know what it's like, you go to Billings and apply for a job, and, you know, we'll call you, and that call never comes. You know, so the preference that tarot gives, and, and, and the prefer, the preference as well as the presence of when your people drive by and they look out at a project, and they see all their, their nephews and their uncles, and their nieces and nephews working on this job, it brings a lot of pride to them, to say, you know, we're actually working on this. You know, our people are learning these skills, and being able to be, you know, financially viable within the community. And it's a win-win for everybody. You know, you all pay this, you know, the, the taxes and everything else, people say we don't pay taxes, but we pay taxes, you know. And so, you know, all of that goes into the financial base, but I just wanted to, you know, applaud what you're doing here, and looking out for your people, because that, that's bottom line, that's who you're working for. You know, you give everybody that opportunity to be self-sustaining, and take care of that, take care of them and their family. Because one of the best things you can get is the paycheck that you've earned, you've worked for. And that, that's, that's paramount in my mind, and that's what I look for in back in Three Affiliated, where I'm working now. I retired from Yakima, and I'm a, I'm a consultant for Tex, and, uh, my primary function or force there is, is the Tarot Department, and we have a lot of challenges there, and one is just because of the sheer volume. You know, we have twenty-five people working in, in the Tarot Department there, we have eleven compliance officers. And we've got one guy who's over a hundred thousand dollars in fines that we've collected, just one of our compliance officers. And so it's adherence to the law, the enforcement, this gentleman made reference to it, that the enforcement part of it, the penalties need to be there, so that they don't, they come in and sign the agreement, and then, you know, they turn around and, and try to ignore your, your law. You know, and it's your sovereignty, that's what it is, it's your right to self-governance. And people who come on this land have to understand that, that it, it is paramount that they follow the law, and that you have enforcement people out there who they're gonna find them. And a lot of them come here, and they, they wanna work here, and they have to abide by our law. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelsey. Uh, right now, I'm gonna call for recess, uh, until Monday, uh, when we come back, I will finish up the committee reports, and then we'll do the executive and judicial reports Monday, and then we'll as, uh, go through the agenda, uh, in regards to whole business and new business. Uh, so, full recognize Luke.
Uh, Mr. Speaker, and Secretary, members of the body, uh, I just talked with the chairman, and I'm gonna schedule, uh, finance committee, uh, right, uh, ten AM Thursday. Need a finance committee meeting. And the finance committee, uh, would be on the ten million, the seven million, remember they're gonna bring that, uh, those legislation of, uh, for, it's for the casino, the farm and ranch equipment, and then copiers, those three items could be coming in, but we need a finance committee meeting on those. And get a recommendation for the full legislature for next week's session.
Okay, thank you. Uh, another issue is, uh, Malushkino, Doc Kala, cause they, uh, two o'clock, uh, we're having a meeting with, uh, Elk River. Uh, so two o'clock, so right after lunch, come back. Uh, full recognize Pat.
I also caught with Secretary and, uh, schedule, schedule a health human on one o'clock.
Which day?
Thursday, one o'clock.
Uh, Bryce. Yeah, Economic Development, then ten o'clock Wednesday. Corporation codes and whatever's, I mean, up and coming, I guess, like, yeah, corporation codes. Thank you. But if, if there's any more schedules, like, uh, myself or Junior, uh, just schedule with us, and we'll just put it on the board with Jackie and Sheri here. Oh, good to go. Junior. Full recognize Junior, Robert.
I wanna schedule a, a judicial meeting on Wednesday at one, just to update and, uh, get things rolling on that. So one o'clock on Wednesday.
Uh, okay, need a motion to recess till next week at ten AM.
I'm gonna, I'll make that motion, we'll recess until one, I mean, until Monday.
Uh. Okay, go second by Pat, all in favor, say hi. Okay, we're recessed until Monday, and committee meetings throughout this week.